All right, well, good evening. Let's go ahead and call the meeting of June 12, 2008 to order. First, I wanted to thank Riley George in the back there. Thank you so much for the prelude music this afternoon. And of course, the wonderful and talented Susan Miyamoto on piano. Let's go ahead and start with an invocation by Mr. Adams, followed by a flag salute by Councilmember Jeff Comachero.
Would you please stand, bow your head? Dear only Father Lord, we just give you thanks for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to convene in a public meeting. We thank you for the city of Temecula and all that it offers, its residents, its businesses. Lord, we just pray for wisdom and discernment for this city council, all city employees, their health, their safety of our residents, and we ask that you guide and have your hand over this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing as we honor our nation. If you would please say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Comachero?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigaro?
Hello, Madam Clerk.
Hello. Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
I am here. All right, first up, we have a presentation of certificate of recognition to Paul and Edie Palumbo. If you could join us at the podium. There you are. And I normally would ask the mayor pro tem to present this, however, I'd like to ask Mr. Schwank this evening if he wouldn't mind reading the certificate of recognition and telling this wonderful story. Thank you. Sneak in here and we'll get close.
Sure, sure.
All right, welcome. The Paul and Edie Palumbo owners of Palumbo's Restaurante in Old Town Temecula. We have retired after 12 years serving the Temecula Valley. Palumbo's Restaurante, founded in 2006, offered authentic Italian cuisine using many recipes handed down through the family generations, as well as relaxing dining atmosphere. Palumbo's Restaurante contributed to our local economy by using fresh local ingredients, developing relationships with guests, partnering with businesses for referrals, promoting events, and regularly donating to local nonprofit charities, youth sports teams, and schools. The city council congratulates Paul and Edie Palumbo on their retirement. We thank Paul and Edie for their many contributions to our community and wish them happiness and success in their future endeavors. And this is signed by Mayor Matt Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're not closing, are you?
We sold, yes.
Oh, you do, okay. But the restaurant's staying open?
The restaurant is staying open.
Okay.
It's remaining Italian, a different name, and their recipes, and I'm sure you'll all enjoy it, and please support them like you have us through the years. You've been a wonderful community to do business in and to live in. We love Temecula.
All right.
Thank you.
We are honored to have been in this community all this time, and we really appreciate all of the support that everyone has given us over the years, and thank you all so much.
Well, thank you. And, Mr. Schwank, thank you for bringing this to my attention. You're definitely going to be missed. You've been a staple of Old Town for a real long time. In fact, some of my first meetings with city staff years ago were started right at your restaurant, so very fond place in all our hearts and memories, and we're sad to see you go but know you're on for better things, and thank you for all the years of wonderful service to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, let's see, public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we only have one public comment on non-agendized items and no public comments on the consent calendar.
All right, well, then, I'm going to go ahead and read this. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Can we have our speaker, please?
Our only speaker is Lorena Spencer.
Right. Good evening, Ms. Spencer.
Good evening. My name is Lorena Spencer, and I own the Painted Garden in Old Town Temecula, and I'm back, not to be a nuisance, but to continue an important mission. We need to be responsive to all visitors to Old Town. That means immediately addressing inadequate restroom services. They're actually beyond inadequate. They are embarrassing. The elderly, impaired, and many visitors who must use wheelchairs to get around are being asked to hike uphill to City Hall to use their restrooms far too often. We need facilities more readily and conveniently accessible on level ground. For a time, the restrooms at the theater courtyard were open to the public. They are handicap accessible, and if I'm not mistaken, paid by taxpayer dollars. But now they're closed. This means only the Sixth Street restrooms and the ones at City Hall are available for prime-time hours. This is clearly a significant inconvenience for those shopping in the heart of Old Town who have difficulty negotiating the climb uphill to use a restroom. As a result, based on my experience, many of these visitors leave earlier than planned, and they don't come back. I have to explain to my customers that have complained to me that this is just the way it is, even though I don't agree with it, this is the policy. If the theater's restrooms remain unavailable, the property between the children's museum and the mercantile would be an ideal location for new restrooms. Perhaps it might encourage action if those with physical disabilities who find the two-and-a-half block uphill to the Civic Center a severe challenge, join me. Join me at the next council meeting to express support of this extremely important issue. It makes no sense whatsoever to invest so heavily in bringing visitors to our city when we're asked to have them search and hike for restroom facilities in the jewel of our city, Old Town. How is it? What do I have to do to get this on the agenda? Because I don't want this to be a three-minute, one-sided conversation every two weeks. This is a very important issue that needs to be addressed. Can anybody help me with this?
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, your time is up, but I appreciate the comments. And, Mr. City Manager, if we could get a staff report on this issue?
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just to comment real quickly, there are planned public restrooms for Main Street as part of the development in front of City Hall, which will address Ms. Spencer's concerns that she's outlined. I would like the opportunity, if not have Kevin Hawkins meet with Ms. Spencer, and we can sit down and we can talk in greater detail about what's planned, why we have restrictions on the theater restrooms, and better explain it to her, and I would like you to take us up on that opportunity.
Were they not paid by taxpayer dollars?
I'd like to set up the meeting with Ms. Spencer and Community Services.
Of course.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do that, and if you could make sure your contact info, phone number, whatever you have with the city clerk, and we'll get in touch and talk soon.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, let's see, we're moving on to city council reports. Any reports from our colleagues? Nothing. All right, well, moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve action minutes of May 22, 2018, and budget workshop action minutes of May 24, 2018. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve financial statements for the third quarter ended March 31, 2018. Five, approve an agreement with, oh, Vavrenic? Come on! Couldn't give me the phonetic spelling there? Trine and Day and Company LLP for audit services for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. Six, approve a five-year sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2018-19 through fiscal year Item number seven, approve exclusive negotiating agreement with Alitra LLC for the potential disposition of property located on the corner of Rancho California Road and Diaz Road, APN 951-021-089, and a portion of Diaz Road. Eight, approve the purchase of technology equipment from Helixstrom Inc. for the life cycle replacement of computer servers and mass storage device at Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. Number nine, approve an agreement with Inland Empire Property Services for weed abatement services fiscal year 2017-18. Item 10, approve First Amendment to the Agreement with Eskel Corporation for Plan Check Services for Fiscal Year 2017-18. Item 11, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with Kaiser Marston Associates, Inc. for Real Estate Economic Consulting Services. Item 12, approve the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for the Town Square Marketplace Development between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC located at APNs 922-360-004, 5, 6, and 7. Item 13, approve fiscal year 2018-19 CRNR schedule of solid waste and recycling rates pursuant to franchise agreement with CRNR, Inc. Good evening, Alex Brekovich. Number 14, approve an agreement with St. Francis Electric LLC for minor maintenance services for on-call traffic signal maintenance services. Item 15, approve an agreement with Wildon Engineering for on-call traffic engineering services. And item number 16, approve the First Amendment to the Non-Exclusive Commodity Agreement with McCain, Inc. for traffic signal equipment and the city's traffic signal equipment replacement program. Item 17, approve the installation of a high-visibility rectangular rapid-flashing beacon, or RRFB, crosswalk system on Deer Hollow Way at Great Oak High School. And finally, item 18, approve the plans and specifications and reauthorize solicitation of construction bids for the roundabout improvements at the intersection of La Paz Street and Inez Road, PW 18-06.
Mr. Mayor, I want to pull item 13 for a quick comment. I want to register a no vote on item 17, and then I'll move the balance.
Second. All right. Well, let's go ahead and pull item 13. Let's start there.
Yeah, and it's actually just a quick comment regarding CRNR. You know, this comes up every now and then, and I see Mr. Brekovich out there, and a fine company, Mr. Brekovich. I just think, you know, we don't see you here often enough and tell you that, but really, CRNR has been so responsive to our customers, which are the citizens here in our community, that, well, we just don't have an opportunity to tell you that often. So, we appreciate, literally, within minutes, whenever there's a problem with a citizen, you guys are on it, and they really appreciate that. So, job well done, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second with a noted no vote from Mr. Nigaro on item number 17. Let's go ahead and cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0 with the noted no vote on 17 for Mr. Nigaro. Go ahead and reconvene to Temecula Community Services.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here. Do we have any public comment here? Then we'll skip over that. We'll go to the consent calendar. Item 19, approve the action minutes of May 22, 2018. Item 20, approve financial statements for the third quarter ending March 31, 2018. And item 21, approve a sponsorship agreement with the Temecula Sister Cities Association for the support of cultural exchange.
Move consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Hawkins, got anything for us tonight?
Yeah. Mr. President, this month, there's always something to do here in Temecula with our fun-filled and safe summer activities in full swing. Check out our Rockin' Summer Concert Series on Thursday nights at the Temecula Amphitheater, or the family-friendly Moonlight Movies in the Park series on Fridays at Temecula Hills Park, or mark your calendar for Saturday, June 23, for Night of Sights, Sounds, and Fragrances at the Night of Illuminaries located at the Rose Haven Heritage Garden. Be sure to be part of this magical evening. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Adams, we have a general manager's report this evening.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Any board member reports or comments?
Yep.
Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to June 26.
Moving.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Meeting is adjourned.
Almost. All right, we're going to go ahead and call the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency meeting to order. Do we have any public comment? Oh, can we get the roll call? Hey, we're all here. How about that? All right, good. No public comments, so we'll dispense with that. Let's see, on calendar today, item number 22, approve financial statements for third quarter ended March 31, 2018, and item number 23, approve the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement for the Town Square Marketplace Development between the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the City of Temecula, and Town Square Marketplace Old Town LLC located at APNs 922-360-004, 5, 6, and 7.
Move 23, 22, and 23.
Second.
Please cast your votes. And that passes 5 to 0. Do we have any executive director report this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Anything from the Board of Directors? Nothing. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and, let's see, joint meeting of the city council, Community Services District, and Successor Agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And once again, note that we are still here. Do we have any public comments here? We do not. Okay, so all we have tonight is item number 24, approve fiscal year 2019 to 2023 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and adopt fiscal year 2018-19 CIP and annual operating budgets for the City of Temecula, the Temecula Community Services District, TCSD, and the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, or SARDA. Can we get a staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you recall, we held a budget workshop on May 24 to discuss in detail the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 annual operating budget and the capital improvement program. The presentation tonight will largely resemble that of which we provided at the workshop at that date, and will include the items that were requested by the city council from that meeting. I am proud to report that we have balanced the city's budget for out five years, fully funded all reserves, and continue to provide the necessary resources today, tomorrow, and in the future to maintain the highest quality of life for this community. The benefits of five-year budget forecasting and modeling are numerous, and they allow the city council to evaluate our business options and make the necessary course corrections. Given there are multiple pieces to our budgets, funding sources, that in some cases touch three different budgets, I would like to suggest that we provide the city council the full presentation and then come back for individual questions or discussion at the end. If this is acceptable, I think this will allow a broader and much bigger financial picture to be presented and digested. The agenda for tonight's presentation will include an overview of the five-year CIP recommendations that are outlined in the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2018-19, the TCSD operating budget, as well as discussion on five-year strategic planning. But before we introduce the CIP and operating budget, I wanted to share some current demographic information about our city, which plays a significant role in the strength of our local economy and our budget. As recently published from Nielsen Reports and the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following demographics have been provided. Our current population is just over 113,000. This is a 1.9% increase from 2017. The median age in years is Temecula is 35.1. This is slightly higher than the 34.9 that we reported in 2017. The number of households is up 1.5% from 2017 to 35,466, and the average household income is up nearly 12.5% over the last year to nearly 110,000. Our April median home price in Temecula is 460,000. This is up 5% from April of last year, and the number of jobs recorded and tied to the city of Temecula is 55,100, and this is up 6.6% compared to 2017. And it's important for me to note, this does mark the highest job count in the city's history. Our April unemployment rate, Temecula was listed at 3.1%, and this is down from 4% the prior year. And to put this into context, Riverside County was listed at 3.8, the State of California at 3.8, and the nation at 3.7, so obviously an encouraging trend down. The proposed operating budget and CIP have been drafted to be in line with the six core values of the city council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from 2011, and these are displayed on the screen. It has been just over a year since Measure S became effective as a result of voter approval in November of 2016. This new revenue source has undoubtedly changed the landscape for the city of Temecula. Since April 2017, the city has received $20 million in Measure S revenue and is expected to receive a total of $25.2 million next fiscal year. Measure S funds are programmed in accordance with the city council's guidelines, with public safety being the top priority. Measure S has funded the addition of 10 sworn police officers, four of which are dedicated to homeless outreach. Measure S has afforded the city to hire the staffing to open Fire Station 95 in the Roropah Ranch area. A replacement for the city's ladder truck is also on order, and several fire vehicles have also been able to be replaced to enhance fire personnel safety. Measure S funds are being reinvested back into the city's infrastructure, facilities, and equipment to ensure the long-term viability of city assets. Over 50 miles of road resurfacing has occurred, and more is scheduled for this next year. The Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library received a portion of Measure S to refurbish and repaint the facility. The soccer fields at Patricia H. Birdsall Sports Park have been replaced with new synthetic turf. The Ronald Reagan Sports Park will see an expansion and renovation of its restroom facilities. Measure S has also funded multiple capital improvements across the city. Five city parks received new playground equipment, with three more slated for this coming year. Funding for the reconstruction of the Margarita Recreation Center is programmed for fiscal year 2018-19, and funding to complete the design of the new Teen Village project to be located at the Community Recreation Center on Rancho Vista Way has also been included. Measure S also supports the many programs, services, and events offered by the Temecula Community Services District. As you can see, Measure S has had a profound impact on our community in a short span of time. These funds will continue to enhance public safety, protect city assets, invest in capital infrastructure, and provide improved quality of life through TCSDs, people, parks, and programs. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Pat Thomas, our Public Works Director, who will walk us through the proposed capital improvement program budget. Pat?
Thank you, Aaron, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. The Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP, is a comprehensive planning document that identifies and prioritizes major capital improvement projects over the next five years. Major capital projects are those in excess of $30,000 in cost and have a long-term lifespan. Projects in this document are reflected in each of the five fiscal years based on community needs, as determined by the city council, and availability of funding. Many of the projects in the CIP are funded with one-time revenue sources that are non-recurring. Therefore, it's extremely important that the appropriate level of effort is expended to maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of these one-time dollar sources. There are a total of 60 projects proposed in the CIP that are categorized as circulation projects, aimed at reducing traffic congestion, infrastructure or public facilities, parks projects, and a placeholder for the available housing funds administered by the SARDA or the Successor Agency to the former RDA. There's approximately $533 million in total project costs within the CIP. $389 million represents the cost to complete the projects. $144 million has been previously spent on the listed projects, and we've identified $289 million in funded CIP projects for the term of the five-year program. $38 million has been appropriated for the next fiscal year, fiscal year 2018-19, with $77 million that was appropriated in a prior year and will be carried over to the 2018-19 fiscal year. As shown on the table, $305 million of the project costs are identified for circulation improvements across 21 projects. There are 26 infrastructure projects totaling $57 million, 12 park and recreation projects totaling $14.2 million, and a placeholder project for the remaining $12.5 million in redevelopment agency bonds. There's a total of nine new projects requested in the CIP this year totaling over $14 million. These projects will be discussed in more details in the slides that follow. Some of the major traffic circulation improvement projects include the Interstate 15 and Temecula Parkway, or SR 79 South interchange. This project is currently under construction, and we anticipate the completion of this project by the end of this calendar year. The French Valley Parkway at I-15 Phase 2 project is funded. We anticipate that project to start construction in 2020. And the Butterfield Road Extension, Phase 3, which includes a widening Butterfield Stage Road between Rancho California and Los Raina Way. An expansion of Diaz Road to four lanes. The Marietta Creek Bridge at Overland Drive. Overland Drive is currently being extended to Marietta Creek, and the next phase of that project will be to construct the bridge over the creek. And the Nicholas Road Extension and improvements, which will be funded through the recently issued Community Facilities District bonds for the Roropah Ranch development. With respect to our streets, certainly one of the highest priorities we can strive for is the proper maintenance of our roadways. We recently updated our pavement condition index to survey the city's road network and assign a rating to each road. This analysis provides recommended funding levels to maintain the condition of our road network and will be used to prioritize available funds, and we'll be presenting that pavement network and will be used to prioritize available funds, and we'll be presenting that pavement management study update to you at your next council meeting on June twenty-sixth. The fiscal year 2018-19 pavement rehabilitation projects is funded with eight point four million dollars. The major projects to be included in that are Rancho California Road from west of I-15 to the westerly city limits. That project is scheduled to start construction by the end of this month. Winchester Road between Nicholas to the eastern city limits. Inez Road from Winchester to Date Street. Another residential slurry seal project. The Meadowview Loop, including Villanorte and Del Ray Road, and the Business Park Drive There are also twenty-six infrastructure projects with over fifty-seven million dollars in costs. Notable projects include the Bike Lane and Trail Program, which includes one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in carryover funds with an additional one hundred and seventy-nine thousand allocated in the next fiscal year. Part of the Bike Lane and Trail Program, a separate project was created to fund the construction of a pump track at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park at a cost of approximately three hundred thousand. The city will save significantly on its annual street lighting costs through the streetlight acquisition and LED conversion project. Following approval by the CPUC later this year, the city will acquire approximately seventy-five hundred streetlights throughout the city and begin the conversion to LED fixtures. We will also be investigating how our streetlight infrastructure can be utilized for future smart city applications and other revenue generating possibilities. The Information Technology Department has been working with the consultants to inventory the city's facilities and develop recommendations for a comprehensive citywide surveillance camera program, and this contract was recently awarded by the city council. The goals of the program will be to support public safety, traffic management, and asset protection activities and services to our citizens. Funding for this project is reflected at two point nine million plus amounts included in the various facilities scheduled to have surveillance cameras installed. The total cost of the citywide project is estimated to be four point five million, and again, was recently approved by the city council. The recently completed ADA Transition Plan includes funding for identified projects over the next five years from the Community Development Block Grant to implement improvements identified in the plan. As the highest circulating library in Riverside County, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library is proposed to have a second parking lot installed below the existing lot. A total of one million is programmed to evaluate the feasibility and design of a new parking structure in Old Town. The city has chosen a consulting firm, Affair and Peers, to conduct the parking counts in Old Town, which will be taking place this month. The results will provide the city valuable insight into how the parking supply in Old Town is being used and what parking management strategy should be implemented to improve the parking experience for those coming to Old Town. The results of the parking study will also inform future decisions on the most efficient location of the new parking structure. Design for the reconstruction of the former YMCA, now called the Margarita Recreation Center, and construction funding of four point eight million is included in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen program for this new intergenerational community center. An additional two point eight million is programmed for the pool to be designed in fiscal year nineteen twenty and constructed in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as this funding becomes available. As noted earlier, a new CIP project has been included for the renovation of the pool facility located at the Temecula Elementary School, which is utilized by the city for its aquatics programming. Funding for this three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar renovation is programmed in fiscal year 2018-19. A total of one point one million is programmed for the design of the new Teen Village to be constructed at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park adjacent to the CRC facility. Eight point four million dollars has been programmed for the construction of this facility in fiscal year 2021, leveraging Measure S funds with development impact fees. The city has two point seven million dollars programmed for sidewalk improvements in fiscal year 2018-19. The recent passage of Senate Bill One, or the new gas tax, has provided three point six million in funding to complete the San Gratuitas Creek pedestrian bicycle trail extension and interconnect project. City matching funds of seven hundred and two thousand will be provided by Measure S connecting the trail between Inez Road and Marietta Creek. Fire Stations Seventy-three and Eighty-four are both in need of funding to add needed facilities and renovate existing facilities at these stations. Both of these projects will be funded with Measure S dollars. The pool at the CRC is due for renovation, including removal and replacement of the pool decking, pool replastering, and installation of enhanced lighting system with energy-efficient LED fixtures. A total of six hundred and eight thousand, including carryover funds, is programmed for the coming year for park improvements, including parking lot repairs and resurfacing, concrete sidewalk replacement, fencing repairs and replacements, landscaping, and irrigation system efficiency upgrades, drainage system improvements, and lighting system repairs and efficiency upgrades. The CIP recently, or the city recently renovated five city parks and is slated to renovate three more in the next fiscal year. The parks that will be renovated include Riverton, Temecula Hills, and Rotary Park, which are on schedule to receive enhanced playground equipment and improved safety surfacing. As recommended at the budget workshop, an additional four hundred thousand will be allocated to the Children's Museum Enhancement Project, bringing the total available funding to five hundred thousand. And the Community Services Master Plan has been accelerated and funded in fiscal year eighteen nineteen with two hundred and fifty thousand of Measure S funds. To generate the funding in the five-year CIP for these two projects, seven hundred and eighty thousand in Measure S funding for the park restroom expansion renovation and ADA improvement project was removed from the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. However, seven hundred and eighty thousand remains available for these improvements in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget for this project. Another new project this year includes the resurfacing of the city's various sports carts funded with Measure S dollars, including the two inline hockey rinks, tennis courts, and basketball courts. Additionally, Harveston Lake is scheduled to receive improvements to its lake eration system, and various public restrooms throughout the city will be renovated, again utilizing Measure S funds, in addition to a full renovation and expansion of the restroom and snack bar facilities at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Luke Watson, Community Development Director, who will provide details on the SARDA Capital Improvement Budget.
Thanks, Pat. In 2010 and 2011, the former Redevelopment Agency issued affordable housing bonds, which were recently refinanced in 2017. As a result of the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency in 2012, the remaining twelve point five million in affordable housing bond proceeds were passed to the city for use in the development of affordable housing. In order to utilize these bond proceeds for their specifically intended purpose, affordable housing, the city released a request for proposals, or an RFP, to solicit innovative project ideas from the development community. The release of the RFP was intended to engage a competitive process whereby development teams would vie for the remaining bond proceeds, and thus, the city could then select the most impactful and cost-effective development possible. This effort resulted in the receipt of over twenty separate affordable housing development proposals, a record for the city in an affordable housing RFP. The city council reviewed all twenty proposals and made specific recommendations on which projects should move on in the selection process. The Supportive Housing Subcommittee, along with staff, interviewed each applicant, and the Subcommittee ultimately recommended two firms to begin negotiations of potential funding agreements based on the unique project proposals. Any agreements entered into will identify the specific amount of affordable housing dollars allocated to each development. Negotiations are ongoing, and staff has expected that if these talks are successful, funding agreements will be before the city council for consideration by the end of this calendar year, and we actually had a Supportive Housing Subcommittee just this afternoon, and staff is hoping to bring some new updates to the council for their consideration in the very near future. I will now turn it back over to Aaron Adams to complete the CIP portion of the presentation.
The proposed CIP program was presented to the Community Services Commission on May seventh, to the Public Traffic Safety Commission on May twenty-fourth, and on June sixth, the Planning Commission reviewed the CIP for consistency with the general plan. Today, we are presenting the CIP for formal adoption. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, to provide an overview of the fiscal year eighteen nineteen annual operating budget.
Thanks, Aaron. Good evening. I'm pleased to report again this year that the general fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced in fiscal year 2018-19. Revenue is projected at seventy-eight million dollars this year, which reflects a two point three percent growth rate over the prior year. Expenditures are projected to be seventy-six million, which is an increase of four point one percent over the prior year, driven primarily by the investment in public safety, which is increasing by three point seven million or nine percent due to the enhanced staffing levels supported by Measure S. General fund contributions to other city funds includes the two point one million annual debt service payment for the Civic Center, two point five million for the conversion of the city's streetlights to LED bulbs, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the installation of a traffic signal adjacent to the park and ride, plus three hundred and sixty-seven thousand for the financing of the streetlight acquisition project previously mentioned. The general fund is projected to end fiscal year eighteen nineteen with twenty-four million dollars in fund balance. Policy-level reserves are fully funded at nineteen million, which represents twenty-five percent of the general fund operating budget. Three hundred and sixty-two thousand is set aside for the Pachanga-funded police officer, and four thousand is assigned to prepaid costs, leaving a total available balance just under four point seven million for one-time expenditures. The budget process begins each year in January with the projection of revenue, which serves as the foundation for the development of the operating budget. To begin this process, staff analyzes each major revenue source, reviews economic trends, and adjusts for local anomalies, such as new businesses or development projects expected to occur during the coming year. In addition, we receive input from a team of consultants for both sales and property tax projections. Revenue is expected to increase by two percent this next year, and the city's largest revenue source is sales tax, which is decreasing by one percent due to a large one-time adjustment to a major taxpayer in the prior year. Property tax revenue is expected to be five percent higher due to increased home values and new home inventories, and property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees is tied to the growth in the city's assessed valuation and is projected to grow by four percent. Franchise fees are received from local utility and cable providers for the use of the public right-of-way. This revenue source is projected to remain flat next year due to a decreasing customer base for cable subscribers, offset by increases in electricity rates. Measure S funds are accounted for in a separate fund for increased transparency, and a portion is transferred into the general fund to cover the cost of public safety. Again, revenue projections are, revenue is projected to increase by two percent over the prior year to a total of seventy-eight million dollars. As illustrated in the pie chart, general fund revenue comes from a variety of sources. Sales tax makes up forty-seven percent of the total revenue base. Property tax contributes eleven percent. Property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees generates ten percent. Four percent comes from franchise fees, an additional four percent from TOT or transient occupancy tax, and five percent comes from the license and permit fees generated by the building, planning, land development, and fire departments. Measure S contributions total seven percent, and four percent is received as reimbursement revenue from the Capital Improvement Program for administration, as well as from Pachanga for the funding of one sworn officer. The general fund operating expenditures for fiscal year eighteen nineteen are projected at seventy-six million. Public safety makes up the majority of the budget and reflects investment of Measure S funding to bring the police staffing ratio to an estimated one officer per one thousand residents. The police budget reflects a projected increase of six percent, and the fire contract includes a full-year staffing at Station Ninety-five plus two new positions to support the fire inspection program. Administrative departments reflect a four percent increase due to inflationary growth and the addition of a new halftime position in the Economic Development Department to support the city's social media outreach efforts. The Public Works budget is five percent above the prior year, due primarily to a new mandate from the State Water Resources Control Board to install five hundred catch basin inlet filters in the city's storm drains over the next ten-year period. Community development also reflects a five percent increase due to the addition of three positions, including a building inspector, an assistant planner, and an office specialist, too. Finally, the non-departmental category reflects a fifty-one percent decrease as the prior year included two large one-time payments that are not occurring in fiscal year eighteen Fifty-nine percent of the general fund resources are dedicated to public safety, which is a four percentage point increase over the prior year and a ten percentage point increase from just two years ago as a result of Measure S investments. The public safety operating budget totals forty-four point five million dollars. Public Works, which includes CIP administration, parks maintenance, and land development, makes up nineteen percent of the total with a budget of fourteen million dollars. CIP admin is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as a general fund revenue. Administration, which includes the city manager's office, emergency services, economic development, finance, human resources, city attorney, city clerk, council, and community support, total thirteen percent of the general fund operating budget. Community development, including planning and building and safety, receives seven percent of the general fund with a budget of five point four million. Now, I'll now turn it over, turn the presentation over to Police Chief Lisa McConnell, who will present the police budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening. As the largest expenditure of the general fund, the police department budget is projected at thirty-four point six million dollars for the coming year. The budget reflects a six percent increase over the prior year and includes the continued funding of the ten police officers added in April twenty seventeen, funded by Measure S, plus one additional sworn officer in fiscal year eighteen nineteen to maintain officer-to-population ratios. The budget also includes a replacement of two motorcycles and the continued fifty percent cost-sharing arrangement with the Temecula Valley Unified School District to fund five school resource officers. The police department is currently staffed with a hundred and twelve sworn officers, seventeen community service officers, and eighteen administrative personnel. I'd like to introduce Fire Chief Charlie DeHart, who will present the fire budget.
Thank you, Lisa. The fire department budget is projected at eighteen point six million, which is offset by the eight point eight million fire tax credit collected via the property tax payments. The net impact to the city is nine point eight million, which is a twenty-one point five percent increase over the prior year. This is due to a full-year staffing of Fire Station Ninety-five combined with additional two positions to support the fire inspection program, which was introduced this year to the business community and will be fully implemented in the coming fiscal year. Two new fire inspection vehicles are recommended, as well as a replacement of two fire administration vehicles. As part of last year's budget, the replacement of the city's ladder truck was approved with the cost spread over two fiscal years. It's anticipated this new fire apparatus will be received by the end of June twenty nineteen. The department has seventy-five employees and maintains a four-person engine staffing model. Now, I'll turn it back over to Jennifer.
Thanks, Chief. The non-safety departments represent the remaining forty-one percent of the general fund with a total budget of thirty-one point five million dollars, and is, and includes the addition of the three and a half positions previously mentioned, plus a new citywide training program designed to offer customer service and management training opportunities for city staff. And finally, the budget continues the funding for the community support grants at a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year. Capital outlay expenditures are those that exceed five thousand dollars and have a useful life of more than three years. Capital outlay requests include the replacement of several fleet vehicles, including six vehicles for community development, eight for public works, two police motorcycles, four fire vehicles, and one for the Information Technology Department. Additional requests include the replacement of technology equipment, copiers, and council meeting broadcast equipment. New for fiscal year eighteen nineteen and in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines for Measure S is the establishment of a guidelines for Measure S is the establishment of a facilities replacement fund to set aside funding for the future replacement of equipment, systems, and fixtures within city-owned facilities. Original projections of Measure S revenue was estimated to bring in twenty-three million dollars per year. After the first three-quarters of receipts, Measure S is on target to generate twenty-five million in the current fiscal year. A modest growth rate was applied for fiscal year eighteen nineteen to bring the projection to twenty-five-point-two million. Expenditures have been programmed in accordance with Council's appropriation guidelines, which are summarized in the following slides. Fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget reflects an allocation of twenty-seven-point-one million in Measure S funding programmed by appropriation category of public safety, asset management, capital projects, and general services, which is primarily to support the Community Services Department. Public safety remains the city's top priority, with a five-point-eight million dollar investment from Measure S to fund ten police officers that were added in two thousand seventeen, the staffing at Fire Station ninety-five, and the replacement of a ladder truck and six inspection vehicles. Investments in asset management ensure the ongoing maintenance and replacement of the city's aging infrastructure, vehicles, facilities, and technology are funded adequately into the future. The allocation to asset management includes five hundred thousand to the fleet replacement fund, the technology replacement fund, and the newly-created facilities replacement fund. Additionally, a new street maintenance fund is being added, with Measure S deposit of one-point-four million dollars to begin accumulating resources for the future replacement of the city's road network. A total of eleven-point-five million, or forty-two percent of Measure S, is recommended to fund a number of different capital projects this coming fiscal year, with the larger projects listed here. Most notable is four-point-seven million for the complete reconstruction of the Margarita Recreation Center, the addition of five hundred thousand to complete the design of the new Teen Village, as well as the funding for the Children's Museum enhancement and the much-needed Community Services or Parks Master Plan update recommended by the council at the Budget Workshop. A total of six-point-eight million is allocated to fund TCSD, the library and residential streetlights, as well as increase- as well as an increase to the level of service provided by Parks Maintenance. As you've heard throughout this presentation so far and illustrated on the past few slides, you can see the widespread use of Measure S dollars at work throughout our city. With the recent establishment of the irrevocable pension trust and approved by council in May, a new budget policy outlining the eligible investments for the trust has been added. A total of eight million dollars is- will be deposited in fiscal year seventeen-eighteen, with future deposits estimated between three and four million dollars per year. Additionally, administrative change is recommended to the staffing budget policy to allow the use of CAL's separation reserve for vacancies created by long-term situations not necessarily associated with employment separation. And now I'll turn it back over to Erin to discuss staffing levels.
Thank you Jennifer. Staffing levels citywide have remained relatively flat since two thousand twelve. Recently, in an unprecedented move, the City Council approved the conversion of eleven project positions within TCSD to full-time benefited positions, and we're grateful for that action. And due to increased demands on our Community Development Department, I am recommending the addition of three positions this coming fiscal year, as well as a half-time position to support economic development. This would bring the total authorized positions to one-seventy-one-point-seven. This includes five city council members and two unfunded positions dedicated to the Margarita Recreation Center. In addition, as a result of the annual classification study process as outlined in the city's labor agreements, and thoroughly analyzed and recommended by a professional third-party, I am also recommending the reclassification of sixteen existing positions. Eight of these positions are represented, seven are management-level positions, and the city clerk position will be reclassified into the Director of Legislative Affairs slash City Clerk, and the corresponding salary range will be reflected in the salary schedule provided at the June twelfth budget adoption hearing this evening. Even with the recommended positions and previous city council consideration, city staffing still remains thirty-nine positions below the peak in two thousand seven, two thousand eight of two-hundred-and-ten-point-eight positions. This fact is certainly not lost on me and is a real testament to the dedicated individuals that make up our existing workforce. It also speaks to how special a place Temecula is that has allowed us to hire and retain top talent in the region over the years with a heart and commitment to public service here in Temecula. I am very proud of what we've been able to accomplish and the organizational excellence we continue to strive towards on a daily basis. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Community Services Director, Kevin Hawkins, who will provide the highlights of the Community Services District Budget. Kevin?
Thanks Erin. The mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for our residents through a complement of programs, services, events, and activities, or as we call it, creating community through people, parks, and programs. In the fiscal year eighteen nineteen TCSD annual operating budget, the projected revenue is estimated at twenty-one-point-seven million dollars. The major funding sources are broken down by TCSD rates and charges at ten-point-four million, one-point-eight-five million, which represents the TCSD portion of Measure C funding. The other half goes to park maintenance, which is included in the General Fund. Six-point-seven-five million is the contribution from Measure S, and two-point-six million is made up of a combination of recreation fees, contract class user fees, and other revenue sources. Again, which brings us to total projected revenues at twenty-one-point-seven million. This next slide provides our proposed expenditures at twenty-two-point-six million dollars. With expenditure- excuse me, with expenditures exceeding revenue by nine-hundred thousand, TCSD will utilize available fund balance to cover the difference. On the expenditure side, our main categories are as follows. Eleven-point-one million parks and recreation, eight million recycling and refuse hauling, one-point-five million for slope maintenance, seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand for residential street lighting, nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand for the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand for operation and maintenance costs associated with the Harvest and Lake Park, and nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars for dirt road maintenance services at Leaf Road. Community services program highlights for FY eighteen nineteen include the continuation of Southern California's premier car show, the annual Temecula Ride Run, which, depending on the weather, brings in over fifty-five thousand people to Old Town each year to enjoy the signature event. From Old Town to the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, always great fun in a safe environment for the entire family, is the Fourth of July Parade and Firework Show, which will again showcase Temecula's unrivaled patriotic spirit. One of my favorite events will be the eleventh annual Special Games, truly an inspirational celebration of our special needs athletes. Christmas time will offer Santa's Electric Light Parade, Santa's House at Penny Pickles Workshop, and ice skating here in Old Town. Also in Old Town, watch art come to life in the form of chalk murals, hand-created jewelry, photography, and more at the annual Art Street Painting Festival. Additionally, the city will proudly pay tribute to our local veterans at the annual Patriotic Salute to Veterans Day event, featuring the Inland Valley Symphony on the steps of the Civic Center. And speaking of the symphony, as part of our Memorial Day weekend observance, last Saturday was our Tribute to Heroes held on the Civic Center steps. And, speaking of heroes, I would be remiss if I didn't briefly mention the Fallen Heroes Memorial, which should be completed in time for a late summer ribbon cutting. Conceived by our military ad hoc subcommittee and paid for through the sacrifice of heroes such as Temecula resident and Marine Staff Sergeant Louis Carden, the city collaborated with community partners including the BFW, the Temecula Valley Women's Club, Riverside County Supervisor Chuck Washington, Commissioner Bob Hegel, and others for a powerful memorial that will truly honor our veterans and heroes the right way, the Temecula way. The city also continues to collaborate with our wonderful nonprofit friends groups for both the Children's Museum and the Temecula Valley History Museum, as well as the Old Town Temecula Association and Visit Temecula Valley, to bring residents and visitors these wide-ranging seasonal attractions, which are synonymous with the high quality of life here in Temecula. This year, TCSD staff will continue our extremely popular activities at the California Parks and Recreation Society award-winning Eagle Sword Playground and Splash Pad. Human Services will be expanding on the successful Global Citizens Viticulture/Horticulture Program model to develop a new internship program for special needs individuals. Looking for a safe and timely curb-to-curb transportation from the Mary Phillips Senior Center to various locations throughout the community? Well, as an outcome of the recently completed senior services master plan process, the city offers alternate transportation every Wednesday on the Silver Shuttle to its senior residents. The intergenerational tech program was founded on a simple premise that young people know more about computers and smartphones than adults and seniors, and we were right, which resulted in a very successful intergenerational program over at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. Our cultural arts team continues to showcase Temecula's Helen Putnam Award-winning offerings through the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, Jazz at the Merc, and Art Off the Walls on the first Friday of the month. Temecula's History Museum programming builds upon last year's TripAdvisor Certificate of Excellence. This year will feature the completion of a History of Temecula children's book, a continuation of our Culture Quest Summer Camp program, and approximately thirty school tours, fifty regular tours, and seven exhibits for the year. Another highlight was the launch of Around and About Temecula, bringing the pages of our recreation and theater brochures to life. Around and About Temecula is our monthly communication- excuse me, our monthly community outreach web series, where we showcase all that community services have to offer. As always, TCSD will continue to offer the highest quality of sports, recreation, aquatics programs this next fiscal year for a very deserving community. As community ambassadors, the city's parks and open spaces will continue to be safeguarded through our Park Ranger Program. Also a critical part of TCSD operations, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library provides excellent library services for our community, with a monthly circulation of approximately fifty thousand items, which is highest in the county. In concert with other city staff, public safety, the nonprofit community, faith-based organizations, and regional partners, and as part of our wide-ranging quality-of-life efforts, TCSD will continue to provide homeless outreach program administration in coordination to address the issue of street-level homelessness here in Temecula. Under teen outreach, despite the many offerings we have here in Temecula, like in most cities, we can do more for our teens. To further refine our efforts by identifying what teens want here in our community, we have developed a quick survey to help us design a future facility. Through this and other outreach efforts, we hope to create new, safe, and innovative opportunities for our Temecula teens. From community services to community development, I'd like to again turn it over to Community Development Director Luke Watson.
Thank you Kevin. Finally, the proposed successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA, fiscal year eighteen nineteen operational budget includes debt obligations of the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency. The city's redevelopment agency was dissolved by the state in two thousand twelve, and since then, the city has worked to wind down the remaining SARDA obligations. It is critical to note that the funding source for the repayment of the SARDA obligations is the Riverside County Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. This fund is made up of property tax receipts collected by the county of Riverside. The city's only responsibility is to administer the SARDA obligations until the term of those obligations expires. The county trust fund proceeds are simply passed through to the city. No General Fund dollars are obligated or used to satisfy the SARDA obligations. The State Department of Finance approved the following outstanding obligations for two thousand eighteen nineteen. First, debt service payments for the former RDA bonds, which total five-point-five million. This amount was reduced significantly from the prior year due to the refinancing of the outstanding debt obligations of the former redevelopment agency. And second, one-point-one million is the other Department of Finance-approved obligations, including the Abbott Development and Disposition Agreement and affordable housing obligations. I will now turn it back over to Erin to discuss the city's five-year outlook.
Thank you Luke. Per city policy, staff creates a five-year financial forecast of the General Fund, Measure S Fund, and TCSD each year. These long-range forecasts serve as strategic planning tools to help us evaluate the city's ability to meet its long-term obligations. Granted, priorities can and they will change, yet the five-year modeling has become an invaluable tool for us to utilize to ensure a solid fiscal and stable future is paramount. We are not just concerned about this year, but rather those that follow behind it. The primary benefit of long-range planning is to alert the decision-makers of trends in time to implement changes if necessary. Since the Budget Workshop, the city was notified by the County Executive Office of a recommended change in the calculation methodology of the Riverside County Sheriff's Contract Rate. The county is recommending the inclusion of several public safety services that are not currently in the contract rate, including aviation services, patrol captains, crime analysts, portions of dispatch, et cetera. If approved, the fiscal year eighteen nineteen contract rate is projected to increase from five percent over the prior year to twelve-point-five percent, which is a two-point-three million dollar increase to the city's police budget. A phased implementation over a three-year period is also being contemplated and personally recommended, which would increase the city's police budget by nearly one million dollars per year for the next three years. The County Board of Supervisors is expected to consider this proposal in either June or July of two thousand eighteen. And once the new rate is- proposal is approved, we will bring a budget adjustment back to the City Council for discussion and consideration. Additionally, it is important for me to acknowledge that one such revenue stream that has a very questionable future is that of the SB one gas tax that was signed by the governor in two thousand seventeen. Our city is programming and expending this revenue in accordance with the state guidelines, yet it appears likely a repeal effort will be put to the voters of California in this November. So what does this mean for our community? If it is repealed, it will mean that we will lose one-point-eight million dollars annually to conduct pavement management, street maintenance citywide. Unfortunately, it also means we stand to lose thirty-seven million dollars that is programmed for the second phase of the French Valley Interchange Project, a very important regional freeway improvement. And with the recent passage of Proposition sixty-nine, which is the measure that closes the gap on the SB one gas tax expenditures, we will continue to monitor the polls to see if this will change California voters enough to stave off the potential repeal of SB one in November. Jennifer?
The five-year forecast includes realistic revenue growth assumptions based on recent trends and known changes on the horizon. Expenditure projections reflect information received from the county related to both the police and fire service contracts, fixed staffing levels for all non-safety departments, the maintenance of police staffing ratios to keep pace with population growth, and the four persons-per-engine fire staffing model. With the infusion of Measure S funding, the five-year outlook for the General Fund remains fiscally strong and revenues- with revenues exceeding expenditures, reserves fully funded, and the General Fund structurally balanced in all five years. As summarized on the screen, Measure S funds have also been modeled over the coming five years in accordance with the Council's appropriation guidelines. This table illustrates the rapid shift in funding towards public safety as the costs for police and fire contracts continue to rise over the coming five years. Measure S funding is dedicated to public safety, grows from twenty-two percent this next year to forty-seven percent by year five. The ongoing reinvestment into the city's roads, vehicles, facilities, parks, and technology necessary to properly maintain and replace our city's assets are a priority and will be funded into three-to-four million dollar range per fiscal year. General services, which includes- I'm sorry. General services includes funds to augment Measure C and program revenues to maintain existing service levels- Measure C and program revenues to maintain existing service levels within TCSD, the library and service level B, or residential streetlights. Measure S funds available for capital projects will lessen over time as the operational costs of public safety and TCSD increase.
In closing, I would again just like to reiterate the uniqueness and privilege of the opportunity we have been given to balance out five years, meet our reserve requirements, fund the public safety to our desired levels, and invest heavily into needed capital projects, invest into proper maintenance of existing assets, and maintain the high quality of life of programs and services our residents have come to expect. We have a great deal to be proud of and remain a blessed community on many fronts. It is certainly deserving to express our thanks and gratitude to our citizens who have allowed us to be in this trusted and enviable position to provide this level of delivery and service. To highlight again, the major investments for the coming fiscal year include in excess of $50 million for police, fire, and other public safety services and equipment, a total investment of $9 million to continue to maintain our city's road network, and over $289 million has been identified to fund nearly 60 capital improvement projects over the next five years. I'd like to thank all the department heads and their staff for their efforts in preparing excellent budget submittals. I also want to recognize the members of the budget team who have dedicated many, many hours over the past several months to complete this year's annual operating budget and CIP binders. My thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Rudy Graciano, Pascal Brown, Tricia Hock, Mike Wooton. And with that, Mayor, members of the council, your staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that report. You have any questions? Start there.
I'm in the queue.
You are in the queue. Ms. Edwards, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With $304 million in circulation projects in our future, I hate to ask this question, but I'm just curious. TCSD, Kevin, you said $9,633 for road maintenance, and I'm trying to think of what, you know, yeah, under TCSD, what is it?
Yeah, that's for maintenance of Leaf Road, the one dirt road that we have that we provide just a minimal level of maintenance on.
All right. That makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Stewart.
The improvements to the Harvestton Lake, will that allow fishing at some point? Is that something we're heading towards?
We are exploring that. There are some improvements that need to be done, which we've shared with the community. It's been discussed at the commission level. That's part of the process.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? Any, any comment or discussion? Mr. Nigard?
Well, that was quite the presentation, and I need to compliment you on the thoroughness of it. It was polished, it was thorough, it was thoroughly handled as a team, and frankly, it's probably the best one I've ever seen. In all honesty, we've had some thorough presentations over the years by some very competent managers, but this one, I could tell you went to, to the extreme, and I think in particular because of Measure S, and I really appreciate that, to really lay out a detailed budget. For some people that may not be numbers-oriented, it might have gotten a little bit boring. To some of us who have been involved in numbers, and particularly with Measure S and what the increase in, in the cost of public safety services, we have lived and breathed and worried about those numbers for years, and so it's almost like exhaling and saying, my gosh, we, you know, not only did our citizens trust us, but also we put into effect everything we said we were going to do. We planned it out five years. It keeps us as a city very up to date, very safe, and also everything, reinvesting our capital dollars. So, well done, and like I said at the workshop, from soup to nuts, you guys really covered it. I suspect you practiced this. Did you guys practice this?
This has been a project, so yes, we, we put a lot of time, and I again like to thank the department heads, their staff. There is a lot of information here, and it's impossible to not script sort of the delivery of this, and so that's, that's how we, we do that, and hopefully it was conveyed and received well in terms of the illustrations and the numbers themselves.
Well, it certainly, certainly was. I appreciate, I appreciate police and fire giving their reports, I appreciate all the handoffs. My last comment, it is clearly, clearly, this entire team that works for the city has demonstrated a mastery when it comes to the budgeting process and using the city's dollars. I'm just very impressed, and I just want to compliment you. I don't have any questions, because again, as I said, we've been into this for so long, and a lot of this is known to us. And then my last comment, forgive me if I'm stepping out of line, but congratulations to you, Mr. Comachero. I think you've delivered a balanced budget every year of your council tenure, and this might be your last one, so who knows?
Who knows?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Comachero?
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, this is my 21st budget, and I have to agree with Mike, I don't think I've seen a better one since I've been up here. And it's not just the budget, not just the document, but it's clear the effort that has gone into it, the thought that's gone into it. It's a little bit of a different budget year in a good way because of Measure S. It's so heartening to look out five years and know that we're sound and we're solid. And while we're throwing out thank yous, deservedly so, to our staff, I'd like to thank citizens of Temecula who had enough faith in us, in our staff, and the way we go about budgeting, and the way we spend the public's money to support Measure S, close though it may have been. And now you're getting a real firsthand look at the benefits of passing that measure. It has set ourselves up as a city for years to come, not just to be financially sound, but to be successful as a city. And one of the things I've often wondered about in, in my years of doing this is looking at, at cities around the country. You know, I've done a lot of work over the years with the National League of Cities, and so I've interacted with an awful lot of cities around the nation. What makes cities good cities? What makes cities great cities? And what contributes to the decline of once-great cities who now have hit on hard times? And there are a lot of those around the country. And it really has become clear to me that the answer to that question is the commitment of our residents to support the things that create first-class cities. I don't know how much longer I'll be up here, but I, I hope we never lose that, not just up here, but in all of you. It's, it's a marvelous resource, and it's a marvelous asset to the city of Temecula.
Very well said. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, none of us talked about the fact that this week we learned that Temecula was rated the highest prosperity, or the most prosperous city in Riverside County, and the 35th most prosperous city in the nation. And I think that is directly attributable to the long-range planning that we do. You know, a lot of cities right now are struggling, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to pay that increase in police costs if they're contract cities. And we're very fortunate to have supreme staff and, and leadership and a council throughout Temecula's history that has been very responsible and looked ahead, not just thinking about tomorrow or next year. And, and as Councilmember Comachero said, we are, we're very blessed, but it's intentional and meticulously done year after year. And thank you to the residents who had the foresight to invest in their city. And they invest 50%, and the great deal about Measure S is that 50% of the revenue comes from visitors. So it's like having somebody visit your house and make half your house payment for you. So thank you to everyone, staff, just an exceptional job. Thanks.
All right. Again, just echoing my colleagues, kudos to Aaron, you and, and your staff, and everybody who participated in this. And it's kind of funny, the lack of public comment is, doesn't mean that, you know, it's not an amazing budget. In fact, every year now, we win these awards, and we sort of look at that and take it a bit for granted, but Ms. Hennessy, your team and, and all the work you do keeps us as, you know, one of the, I think, most fiscally transparent and appropriate cities in, in the region. And so it's because of that that we're able to have such a good message this year. I, I would caveat a little bit of this and say, you know, in, into the future, as we look toward some of the projects that we're talking about, you know, I'm, I'm really looking forward, Pat, to seeing the, the analysis that was done on the streets, because, you know, I just had some folks in my office earlier today, and we were talking about road conditions. And, you know, it, it, look, to everyone who has the potholes on their streets and, and issues, 100%, we, we all understand it. And, you know, and we have two obligations as far as, as far as the city goes. One is, of course, maintaining what we already have, and, you know, it was, it was impressive to see that this year we were able to accomplish 50 miles, 50 miles in the city of Temecula of slurry seal and road repair. I mean, that's a, that's a remarkable accomplishment in, in avoiding that deferred maintenance cost, because, you know, a half a million dollars invested in, you know, slurry seal today saves millions of dollars in deferred maintenance into the future. And at the same token, you know, there's a handful of streets, and I'll be very interested in, and specifically in Avenida Barca and San Pascal, to see, you know, what the status of those are and their, their sort of priority and ranking among, you know, all the other streets in the city, because I think we all have those that we drive down every day, and, and those, you know, were two that were brought up earlier today. And, and, you know, we need to have, again, I appreciate the, sort of the independence and the new technology you're using to assess all the streets in the city, and then provide, you know, everybody a bit of, I think, comfort, if anything, saying, you know, we recognize the issues, and, and there is a priority list, and, and it's an independent sort of scientific process, and, and we're going to work through that and make sure that we are responsive to, you know, all of the needs in the city, and, and frankly, past mistakes that were made in, you know, construction and, and materials and things that were done far before Temecula was even a city. And so, you know, it's, it's an important process, so I'm really looking forward to that. The, the other things, you know, we talked a little bit about Measure S and sales tax and how the roughly half of the sales tax that we generate in the city is from, from tourism and outside dollars. And I think that's an important thing for us to continue keeping track of, because we certainly did it, you know, over the last couple of years, and, and as we're moving through, you know, our tax measure and, and other issues. But I want to make sure that as, you know, tourism grows and as that sort of contribution to our community changes, that we're, you know, in our annual report, maybe in the year, mid-year budget review, you know, I don't know how difficult that is to get a hold of the data, you know? And I don't want to add in a whole lot of extra work, but, but I think that's an important metric to be able to track, you know, or is it increasing or decreasing? Because over the years, if we're maintaining a 50% ratio, that's good to know, but if that number changes, that's important for us, especially when we're thinking about five-year budget planning and projections, that if, you know, tourism becomes a more dominant part of our economy or not, well, we need to be able to track that and, and respond to that into the future. The, let's see, the last thing I have is, is one that's less, less fun to talk about, and that's the, the recent contract rate that, that Mr. Adams mentioned for public safety. You know, that's coming at a time when we're very proud of the type of budget that we produced, and then, you know, all of a sudden, we have a meeting with the county, and they say we need, what, roughly 2.3, 2.5 million, you know, in addition to what we're already paying. And, you know, I know it, it's not unnoticed by, by the city of Temecula, but certainly every contract city in Riverside County, that that is not an insignificant ask. And it's, and it's coming at a time, you know, where frankly, we've already, you know, we're voting on this budget in absence of knowing what the county's going to do and whether they're going to, you know, slap us with a additional fee of, of, you know, over $2 million. You know, it's, it's unexpected, and I think in some ways unprecedented, because, you know, we know that law enforcement costs shift over time, but frankly, you know, I'm concerned of whether or not the costs are justifiable. I'm concerned about the way the costs have been calculated and allocated. And then, sort of continuing the conversation that we had earlier today, Mr. Adams, I'm also concerned about the legality of the county being able to pass on those types of cost or that color of money to local government like the city. And so I'd, I'd sort of, as we, you know, move the item forward, one of the things I'd like to ask from the council is to just indulge the subcommittee that we do have on, I would, I would assume, public safety, is that?
That's correct. I think we have a public safety ad hoc that would fit the bill for this.
Sure. And, and just be able to continue the dialogue with the county, but also dig into a little bit more on, on what that means, because, you know, certainly the preferences, if we have to get hit with a high bill, and an unexpected high bill, the preferences, like you said earlier, Mr. Adams, you know, gosh, we should be able to stretch that out over three years if we have to, especially since we were given no warning on this. But, but more importantly, I think, is we need to really dig into where those numbers come from, because, you know, and, and to be very candid about this, you know, what the information we were given says it's basically allocated on the amount of resources the city pays for their law enforcement protection. And my, my deeper concern is, we have, especially in the last year or so, invested a tremendous amount more in law enforcement just to help keep up with, you know, the, the rising issues related to, you know, AB 109 and Prop 4757, all of that. But at the same time, you know, I don't think it's necessarily justified that our, I mean, the whole point is to make Temecula safe, right? And to make Temecula safer, not just, you know, assume a status quo. And then the calculation that's handed down to us is basically, you know, of all those other resources, SWAT and helicopter support and everything else that the county pays for, to then allocate those costs back to the city of Temecula based on our use of, you know, police services. And if anything, our use of, I can't remember the last time the SWAT team came into the city of Temecula, and, and I know we have limited use of helicopter support and all of that, so, you know, in, in effect, we're being penalized in some respects for the amount of investment we have in our city's public safety, and that cost is being shifted to the city of Temecula. And in fact, I recognize and fully understand that the county is in a position of saying that they're, they no longer can subsidize cities for public safety costs. I understand that fully, but on the other hand, you know, the city of Temecula certainly isn't here to subsidize other cities for their lack of investment in public safety. And so, you know, I want to make sure that as we make this motion, we continue that dialogue, because I think, you know, that's just sort of the first conversation we've had about this. I know it's very early in the process, but it's deeply concerning to me, because it sets sort of a unique precedent in our relationship with the county of Riverside and the Sheriff's Department. And that's all I've got to say about that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move, I presume, let's see, we have some, some resos here, so let's go ahead and look at these resos.
Do have a couple more comments. We have Mr. Stewart and Mr. Comachero.
Was Mr. Comachero going to respond to? Yeah, I'll let him go first, because it's the immediate thought, so I just want to keep that going.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Mayor, I agree with you heartily on the fact that we need to pay for what we get, not more, not less, and if we can get to that point where we feel very comfortable with that, then we need to get there. So I agree with that. But we also have an opportunity, as, as we all know, to look at the way our policing has been done in the past, look at the levels of efficiency that we've attained, and there have been some pilot projects, as we all know, in some of the cities around the county to date, that have proven very, very positive response, where substantial sums of money can be saved. And while the $3 million hit or $2.3 million hit certainly concerns me an awful lot, I don't think it's as concerning as it needs to be if we make sure that we diligently look at ways to increase efficiencies, that which is already out there and that which we can attain on our own. So I would implore the subcommittee, in the same breath as looking at, looking very strategically at what we're being asked to pay, also look strategically at ways that we can offset, or maybe even more than offset, the cost of those increases.
Couldn't agree more. I think, you know, the, the idea, the pilot studies, while, and we don't need to get into the details, but we may not always agree with...
But you're, you're going to write one, and that's great.
And, and I think we will, and I think we'll get around to, you know, sort of addressing the, the efficiency and effectiveness. You know, I think next City Council meeting, staff, or in City Council reports, I'll be, you know, providing a bit of an update on last week's... week's state of the city. Is that week before? Time flies. Two weeks.
Has that happened already?
Yeah, because it's been remarkable. It does. And, you know, just the, I got to say, just, you know, ringing the bell for law enforcement in particular, I mean, the fact that, you know, our investment in, you know, 11 additional officers over the last year has resulted in Priority One calls becoming what, we reduced the response time by 33%, or about 3 minutes and 7 seconds for Priority One, our most, you know, important calls. That's a remarkable achievement. But I think there's always areas of efficiency to be had, and I think, you know, we'll be talking about that at the subcommittee for sure, and finding areas where we can, you know, improve effectiveness and efficiencies, and maybe be able to invest those dollars back into, you know, public safety. And again, you know, my mantra has always been not, you know, necessarily support the status quo, but always maintain, you know, our status as one of the safest cities in the US. With that said, Mr. Stewart, you are next.
All right. Well, this is only my second budget, so I am very impressed with what you all do here. I mean, it's really quite incredible that we are such a well-run, well-funded city. And so I wanted to put that out there. Also, since, I was going to make this comment a little later, like after we've done this, but being that public safety is our number-one budgetary item, I had a meeting with a concerned citizen about public safety and the amount of break-ins and the things that have been happening around town. And fortunately, our police chief was available for to sit in on that meeting, because I would have drowneded like a rat on a ship. So, but the fact that citizens aren't reporting this crime is not a good thing. If something happens to you, please call the police, no matter how small it is, because what happens is, they track where those crimes are taking place. So, they know where the hotspots begin, so then they can send patrols to make sure, you know, if there's a hotspot occurring, they can, they can keep a really close eye on that hotspot. So, please, they're only as good as the information they get. So, please, report even the mo, I'm guilty of it too, I had a $2,000 bike stolen right out of my garage, hanging from my ceiling, and didn't report it, because I felt stupid for leaving my garage door open. But again, that's, you know, and crimes of opportunity do happen, but it is because there's, there's people in that area that might be causing these crimes. So, please, report the crimes, you're not bugging the police by reporting these crimes. So, please, report these crimes.
All right. Absolutely. Mr. Nigard?
Yeah, you made some interesting comments about public safety, and then, Mr. Comachero, you followed up with a couple of other comments. I want to accentuate something that you said, just for clarity. We're being, a couple of things concern me. We're assigning a value, as you said, to the SWAT team, and those type of things that are being, we're being asked to pay for, and we'd like to know where they're coming up with those numbers. That's real important, how that's being allocated. I do have a concern, and it's kind of unbelievable, that it's based on how much law enforcement we're paying for already. That seems strange to me, and if indeed that's the case, I would think that this council would have a real, real problem with that. I would think it might be the opposite. How little we use the service is not how much, it's just, anyway, that's a little crazy. So, I think you guys are saying different things, but kind of in the same wagon, so to speak. We need to find efficiencies, but I think you need to, that subcommittee needs to drill down and say, how much waste, if any, is in the helicopter budget? How much waste, if any, is in the, you know, the new call center budget, and all of those things? They have to run efficiently if they're going to pass those services on to us, and I think we have a right to ask how they're being run, if that's the case. So, I wanted to piggyback that. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion on that we, with approving the ad hoc, look into those issues, and then also approving a 24.3, 24.4, 24.5, and 24.6.
Second.
Okay, let's cast our votes. All right, and that passes 5-0. Thank you again, everyone, for all of the hard work. All right, let's go ahead and, believe it or not, reconvene the city council meeting, because that was a joint meeting. So, we're back on city council agenda items. Do we have commissioner reports? Let's start with Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Last week, Commissioner Hagel and I attended a presentation sponsored by Temecula Citizen Corps, and presented by Temecula PD on active shooters, training for citizens, if they happen to be a location where it's going on. Very well attended, probably 200 to 300 people there. The two officers teaching it were remarkable teachers, they instilled comedy in it, they kept it light, it wasn't frightening for anybody, and both Commissioner Hagel and I left there feeling very empowered with tools that we can use to protect ourselves and others that are near us in the event of an active shooter. And frankly, I would never have thought of them, but these officers have worked this down to a fine science, and the statistics bear what they're saying. They're going to be offering some more presentations, and that's my reporting on this, because I would encourage anyone here or listening on TV to attend one of these. You'll leave there empowered, too, and you'll do a good job of actually protecting your family, if unfortunately, you find yourself in that situation. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Yeomans?
At our last planning commission meeting, we heard this CIP report, and I echo it all you've said, very well played out, and proud to make you, to be a citizen. Thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Schwank?
Good evening, Mayor Ron, and council members. This past June 2nd was National Trails Day. Matt Peters, along with Director Hawkins and Community Services, created a docent-led hike into the Santa Margarita Ecological Reserve. We created a small video for you to enjoy the hike.
So, everybody, I'm down here in Santa Margarita Ecological Reserve. We had the opportunity today to hike this section of the reserve with San Diego State University. It's just beautiful down here, there's water, saw trout, so much wildlife and biodiversity down here, it's just amazing. National Trails Day, an event like this is just fantastic.
I've hiked a lot of places, and that's some of the most beautiful canyons and mountains that we have around here. It is currently not available to hike to the public, so I encourage the public to not go out there and start hiking through there. It is a docent-led hike. We're looking at ways to increase access to the Santa Margarita Ecological Reserve. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Nice to see that. Old stomping grounds is, of course, of mine, so wonderful. It'd be great to get more docent-led tours out there, and I know San Diego State's doing a great job of trying to facilitate all of that, so, wonderful. All right, let's see, public safety reports. Good evening, Chief DeHart.
Good evening. So, Temecula Fire for the month of May, we had a little over 730 calls for service total. 16 of those were fires. False alarms were 65. That's down, that's down a lot compared to what we've been doing, and I'd like to say that the, most of that has contributed to the field reporting it to the inspection program, and the inspection program is getting on top of that. So, we are down about 60 calls a month on false alarms right now.
Wow.
So, again, the majority of our calls are medical emergencies, a little over 500 of those, so. And then we have a quick video we're going to play for you, starring our very own Captain Hayes, and we'll go ahead and play that, and then the one thing before that comes on is, the next couple of weeks, this, tomorrow, and hopefully next Thursday, Friday, we're going to be doing some controlled burns, VMP burns. Tomorrow's will be at Santa Rosa Plateau, and hopefully the following week, we will finish off about 50 acres at Lake Skinner, so, working on those projects. So, tomorrow, people see smoke, it's us and Santa Rosa. And with that, we'll go ahead and play the video starring Captain Hayes.
As the weather begins to warm up, many families will enjoy cooling down by the pool. To help you and your family safely enjoy their time poolside, please remember the following guidelines. These steps can be the difference between a fun day and a tragedy.
Pool safety begins with making sure children are always actively supervised by an adult when around pools and spas. When supervising the pool area, be sure to keep your phone available in case of an emergency. But remember, the phone is not there to become a distraction. Designate a water watcher to maintain constant watch over children in the pool during gatherings. It's important that this person avoids all distractions, including cell phones and socializing. Learning to swim is both fun and can save your life. Classes are available for kids and adults of all ages.
These steps can go a long way to ensure that your summer is fun, relaxing, and most importantly, safe.
And that'll conclude my report.
All right. Can you play the blooper reel from that next time you're here? Because I got to watch them film that, and that was, we appreciate Captain Hayes, but he is no Robert De Niro. So, that was a great process to watch. I just, the patience in getting that done was just phenomenal.
I'd be careful using that name right now.
A little sensitive.
That's true, that's true. But thank you, guys, for doing that. It's a wonderful public outreach. Where's that being broadcast now?
They're going to broadcast it over some of the various cable internets and stuff, and then our cable network, and it's also going to be broadcast in Spanish, as you know, Captain Fernando was there as well, and so he did the entire program in Spanish as well.
All right. And since we've got Chief McConnell here this evening, anything from your camp?
No.
All right. No worries, I just like putting you on the spot. All right, let's see, city manager report?
I think you've heard enough from me this evening, but just really wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for support, approval of the budget, and now we have our blueprint for the year, and we're ready to get back to work, so thank you.
All right. And Mr. City Attorney?
We have no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
All right. Well, all right, move a term at second. We will see you all next time.